Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to our candidates debate. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you all hear me okay? Yeah, they're asking for a little bit more volume, please. Well, good evening, everyone. On behalf of the St. Helena Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors, we welcome you and we thank you for participating in our debate and for your service to the city. My name is Katie Sompel. I'm a member of the Chamber's Board and I will be your moderator for this evening's debate. Assisting with tonight's debate is, on my far left, Sarah Chappellay, who will be our timing queen. Some of you know Pam Simpson, who is the CEO of the Chamber, and to my direct left, Katie Leonardini, who will be my everything tonight, pretty much giving me the thumbs up what to do next. Thank you so much, Katie. Please take a moment to silence your phones if you haven't already. The Chamber of Commerce is a membership-supported organization representing over 300 businesses in and around St. Helena. These businesses are financially invested in St. Helena. They are directly affected by what happens in our city. A majority of the Chamber members live and work in St. Helena, as well as provide employment to the people in our community. The Chamber hosts these candidate debates on behalf of our 300-plus members to provide insight into the candidates' positions on key issues that will ultimately affect our members as business owners and as local citizens. This debate is one way that we can provide, not only for our members, but also for the voters of St. Helena, a platform to hear how you, as potentially elected officials, will conduct St. Helena's business. Tonight's format is designed to promote a true conversation, where you can answer the questions and also speak to each other respectfully, of course. We will not moderate your behavior, as temperament is vital to serving on the council. These questions that you will hear tonight are designed to prompt more in-depth conversations and discussions among yourselves, rather than surface answers. We have provided paper and pen for you to take notes and to write down any parts of any of the questions, as some may be complex. So tonight's debate has three segments. The first segment includes questions from the Chamber. The second segment will consist of questions provided by you, the candidates, for one another. And the third segment will be questions submitted from the audience. There have been cards provided to the audience. You can circulate them here up to the desk for consideration. They will be collected throughout the debate. And for those of you who are watching at home, you can also text any questions to area code 707-333-2335. And you can also pose questions on the Chamber's website at sthelena.com/chambernews. There will be a 10-minute break after the first segment. So, we have drawn cards earlier this evening to determine the order of the candidates and we will be providing time to each of you to respond to each question. We do reserve the opportunity to follow up with you if we feel that the question was not directly answered or if an issue merits more response. We want to start off tonight's debate on a solid foundation of common goals, because most St. Helenos want the same thing. We want the town to remain authentic and we want the magical, small-town, tight-knit community that brought us all here to live. St. Helena's $64,000 question is, and has long been, "How do we maintain the best of St. Helena while putting us on a path toward financial stability and sustainability?" While we may disagree about the road to get there, we are all here tonight because we care and because we seek leadership that will allow us to break the well-worn path of paralysis by analysis and to progress on key issues such as Adams Street, future hotel development, our general plan, and our fiscal crisis, and of course, our aging infrastructure. We're looking for thoughtful planning and reasonable compromise leadership. So, first let me begin by introducing our candidates this evening. We have candidate Jeff Ellsworth, candidate and incumbent Greg Pitts, candidate and incumbent Sharon Kroll, and candidate Mary Coverstein. Thank you all for joining us again this evening. And so, we're going to begin tonight with opening statements. And Jeff, we're going to begin with you. You each will have two minutes. Begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Jeff Ellsworth, I'm an artist. I grew up in town. I love St. Helena, as we all do. I got involved about three years ago, both in St. Helena and in the county. I think a lot of our issues are interrelated, so I think we need to have a big view of how to solve the problems. We don't live in a bubble here. Some of the things that I want to address are, kind of priority-wise, looking at our fiscal oversight, making sure that we have measures in place that we don't go through what we went through for the last 10 years with not having a system that would catch missteps. I think it's important that we also have -- talk about revenue. That'll probably come up a little bit later. But we have to talk about how revenue balances with impacts. Quality of life for our residents, who are the heart of our town. They are the voters. They are the protectors of our rules. Protection for our local businesses. The businesses that we have here are unique and give this place its character. People come here because of this. So, we want to make sure that our local businesses have the support of the citizens. And the most critical thing I think we need to talk about here and every day is our water security. We're seeing a different kind of approach to water management on the county level that we're not used to seeing. And we've got to make sure that our water protection is locked in and we need to talk about that every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Pitts, you're next.
Good evening. Greg Pitts, I've served in the council for the last four years. Prior to that, I was a planning commissioner and involved in the General Plan Updates Steering Committee. For that, I guess I'm the only candidate here that's currently raising children here in St. Helena, so I see myself a little bit as the, you know, eye towards the future of St. Helena, but also with a keen understanding and respect of the past, which I think is very important. Look, we've done a lot of hard work over the last four years rebuilding our city hall, not literally, but figuratively. And we now have a, really a solid foundation for forward progress and I want to continue to see that progress. We need to generate new revenue sources. There's no doubt about that. But we need to be very careful and measured in how we do it. I think it's a mix of taxing ourselves. I think it's a mix of taxing those that come and stay with us and want to see St. Helena and be a part of it and spend some time. And it's a difficult balancing act, but I think we're -- I've got some great ideas of how we can do that. And look, we've been making progress towards achieving that goal. I'm very involved in the community of -- coached soccer. I coach soccer. I have two teams right now. Basketball, previously baseball. I ran the Cub Scouts for several years. Member of the Odd Fellows and I've lived here for almost 15 years. I'm endorsed by Napa County Supervisor Diane Dillon, State Assembly Member Bill Dodd, and U.S. Congressman Mike Thompson as well. So, I've got some good local support. I think because of my track record and because I've worked with those folks. I'm running a paperless campaign. I'm not putting signs out. I'm doing -- I haven't raised a dime. It's about my philosophy. And if you don't believe in my philosophy, then vote for someone else, but I hope that you do. And I look forward to sharing that further tonight. But I'm very optimistic and hopeful for our future and would love to serve for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Sharon, two minutes for your statement.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sharon Kroll and I have, most of you know, been honored to serve on the St. Helena Council for the past eight years. My husband and I have raised our children here. I hope that's the past tense. I hope they're launched, they're in college now. Anyway, we own and operate a small winery and vineyard in Rutherford and I think that's really critical. I'm the only council member and the only candidate that's actively involved in the wine industry right now, which is really the economic driver of our valley. So, the perspective that I offer is important. We've accomplished a lot in the eight years I've been on the council, but I can't just walk away now, because too much is on the line. We finally have an excellent management team in place and I think it's really critical that that continues. My knowledge of the operations and the finances of the city now are really important. We have some big projects or big decisions coming before us and I think that I've always offered an independent voice in this town, which is not easy in a small town, when your kids go to school with other people's kids, they're on the same teams, et cetera. It's very difficult to make decisions that negatively impact your friends. But I feel I've always operated independently and I'm proud of that. We need to weather this economic storm and get on the road to recovery and I really think I'm the person to help the town do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Mary, your opening statement?
Good evening and thank you to the Chamber for sponsoring this tonight. I'm principally interested in running for the council because I think we need to change sort of our mode of operation. It's true that we've had fiscal issues, but we seem to be focused on them to the exclusion of everything else at the moment. My background is in city planning. I was a planner for 10 years. I've worked extensively with zoning ordinances and planning. I've also been an attorney, worked in land use, real estate development. And I spent my last 10 years working as general counsel to a private real estate development company. So, I hope to bring to the table kind of an overall comprehensive understanding of some of the issues we face. And so, what do I mean about having the council operate a little bit differently? I think our council has to have a vision. I think it has to be more proactive. I think we can't just sit and be so concerned about our financial condition that we hesitate to take some steps to shore up the community and establish a vision in other ways. For instance, are we going to wonder why some of our storefronts are vacant? Or are we going to try to understand the market forces that are at work, what our zoning ordinance is doing or not doing to promote development and what we might be able to do as a city to turn the situation around or create something different that remains thriving and vibrant in downtown? When it comes to hotels, what are we looking for? I think it'd be good to know what the community wants and not just what developers think we ought to have. Lastly, I think we really need to engage our citizens more in the whole process. We deal with a lot of complicated issues and by the time they get to the council level, they are pretty much baked. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mary. So, we're going to move forward now with the Chamber's questions and the first question is going to go to Mr. Ellsworth. Yes, and you will have three minutes and then we'll move down the line to answer the same question.
And then you'll have a follow-up.
And then you'll have a follow-up. Thank you, Katie. Okay, so here's the question. Years of consensus government has resulted in a financial crisis, near-disastrous infrastructure due to deferred maintenance, some of the worst roads in the Bay Area, and an underperforming Main Street, to name a few. On your watch, will we see and will you commit to an approved general plan, a plan for Adams Street, measured economic growth, and an improved governing process that will allow St. Helena to rise above the paralysis by analysis that has kept us in a stuck state for years? Second part of this question is, what will you do differently?
I think we absolutely need to commit to getting a general plan in place. I think it's fairly close. There's a couple of zoning issues that I think need to be looked at. There's some discussion about the tourism element. There's some discussion about the zoning on Adams. But I think that it's necessary to get it put in place as soon as possible. Adams Street, I think, needs to be looked at with the -- through a lens of what the residents want before it goes out to developers with a blank canvas. What we saw come back on these recent requests for proposals was three very large projects. One of them did include elements that were part of what the community wanted. However, it was a very, very large project. I'm concerned about impacts. So, just because something's revenue, brings in a lot of revenue, maybe the impacts offset it. So, I think we have to wait in terms of developing, you know, rushing into anything on Adams Street until we see the impacts of Los Alcobos. We have a financial situation that we need to address. Measure D should give us some breathing room. We also want to talk about -- go back to talking about a possible transfer tax, working with the real estate brokers to make sure it's something that works for them, because they're a critical part of our community. We want to talk about some kind of a large business tax so that businesses that are possibly creating large impacts are paying their way. In Cupertino, the mayor is talking with Apple about how they can participate in helping with the impacts they create. One other item that I think is a huge revenue source for us, we have three major assets that are not being utilized. One is water. The other two is my understanding that we have a lot of world-class winemakers and wine marketers that live in our community. And there are also a large number of wine brands, both in and out of the city, that have been very prosperous using St. Helena water, which is, you know, the mother's milk of winemaking, is water. My thought is that, you know, we're providing this water at a nominal fee that somebody is turning into a hot commodity. So, what if we bring some of those winemakers and wine marketers together, use some of our St. Helena water and create a wine, do it collectively and market that? And we have a lot of expertise in this and I believe it can be done. And that can help create the infrastructure and the reserves that we need.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. We will come back to you at the end. Greg, on your watch, what can we expect to see?
Well, let's start with where we've been. You mentioned we have disastrous infrastructure, roads, underperforming Main Street. We need to fix those things. We don't currently have sources of revenue to do it. Several years ago, we rebuilt, like I said, we've built a new staff. We have a platform. We have new fiscal oversight and a whole new policy instead of sort of operating procedures that's in place for the future. And I think that's great. Now, we really need to focus on raising funding so we can fix the existing roads, but also set ourselves up for the future. I have no doubt that we're going to solve our past problems and get through it. But when I look to the next 10 years, even the next 10 years, we need an additional 3.9, 3.5, pick a number, but it's in that range of additional funding to keep up with our roads. Never mind fixing those that haven't been fixed already, but also our aging buildings, our city hall, our corporate yard. There are a lot of needs that have to be addressed. And so, I think it's imperative that we pass Measure D as a start. People ask, well, what will that do? The reality is Measure D is simply going to give us enough money to break even and start to rebuild our reserves. We've been eating into our reserves over the past few years consistently and it's not a safe place to be. Our cushion is depleting. We need to look to other revenue sources, like I've mentioned. I think we need to consider the property transfer tax. I think we need to look to our existing assets. We have a lot of underutilized -- well, let's just say that our average daily rate here is half of Yountville, but yet we have a good number of hotel rooms. If we can find a way to work with those owners and raise that rate, that's found TOT without building a single additional hotel room. So, we need to do that as well. In terms of measuring economic growth, we absolutely need to do that and we need to -- but we need to have a plan first, because you can measure it, but you need a plan to measure it against. And for the -- oh, I got to stop. So, on to the next.
I actually do have a quick follow-up to that. The second part of the question was, what will you do differently? As an incumbent, you've had several years to address some of these issues. Do you see, have you learned, what do you think we can expect differently from your leadership addressing any of these issues moving forward?
Well, one key thing, and I had this conversation with our city manager. Our city manager has been following our policy, the city council's policy. I want to empower the city manager and all of our city staff to be more proactive, more creative, and bring ideas to us and not just execute our policy, but bring some great ideas to us as we move forward in terms of generating revenue.
Okay, thank you very much. Sharon, do you have a clear response for, or do you need me to repeat anything?
I don't think I need you to repeat anything, but if I forget something, just let me know.
Okay, sure.
Well, ever since I've been on the council, we've been in terrible economic times and we, since 2008, the entire country. But St. Helena was hit hard. We lost some critical sales tax sources such as the Epps Chevrolet dealership. The building trades went down, which impacted the Central Valley sales tax revenue. And we had three bad vintages in a row in the wine industry, 2009, 10, and 11. We're not great. So, it's been -- so, it's been challenging. I've been saying for years, oh, and on top of that, we decided to take upon ourselves to build a $38 million flood project. So, it's sort of a triple whammy. And we -- what we are doing differently now is we are setting goal. Well, I've been saying for a long time, we have a revenue problem. We still have a revenue problem. I agree with Greg and I think with Jeff that we desperately need to pass Measure D. Thank God for Los Alcobos coming online, because without that coming online, we would be in much, much more serious economic times. But we really need to continue. We really need to come up with a long-range economic plan. We fortunately are now have a city staff doing long-range economic financial forecasts. We really would, in a perfect world, if we had more money, we would hire an economic development director who could partner with -- to do public-private partnerships to help do things like fill the empty spots on Main Street and come up with affordable housing, creative solutions. The problem is, is that until we get the revenue in place, our hands are a little bit tied. So, we can solve a lot of problems with revenue, but without it, it's very challenging.
Thank you very much. Mary, are you ready?
Sure.
Okay.
I think your first issue went to the general plan, which has become a behemoth that nobody seems to be able to push over the goal line. I'm in favor of trying to get it adopted as soon as we can, recognizing that we have a continual ability to amend it and modify it and fix the little things that are aggravating all of us now. But we're operating in a vacuum, more or less, without it. So, unfortunately, I guess we are stalled again due to some problem with the EIR statement, but I think it should definitely be a priority. And I think we can do more than one thing at a time. So, I would look at Adams at the same time. I think what I bring to that view is maybe a more comprehensive look at what we're doing. It is probably the largest asset that the city has. I think it deserves the attention of an expert. I mean, this is the one place where I'd really be in favor of hiring an expert who understands hotel development and feasibility and can tell us exactly what we could expect to have developed on Adams and from there, we can figure out what we would like to do as a community, taking also into consideration the city hall and our other assets. For growth, I think we can, we should look at all kinds of revenue, but I don't think we should jump into it without really understanding our need. For me, it's a case of, we need some new numbers after the election, if we have Measure D or if we don't, and we really need to understand what infrastructure will be paid for through the water tax, or water rates, I should say. Last, I'm really in favor of community input. I hear a lot of people frustrated that they don't have a meaningful opportunity to get their input while things are being discussed and that by the time they get to the council, the three minutes that they're given is just not enough time to really develop and understand issues. Stop.
Thank you very much. Jeff, did you want to respond to anything further on that question?
Yeah, I will say, the last part of what Mary said about getting the community involved, I think is really critical. One of the things I've learned on this campaign is that people have felt left out of the process. And if we want to come up with some, if we want to pass a tax, if we want to have people support us, we've got to reach out and rebuild the trust so that they know that what their money is going to is going to have the oversight and the focus of a council that really cares. I think that we could get almost everybody in town on board with passing whatever we need if we reach out and we work on rebuilding the connection between the community and the council and having the community trust that the council is serving their needs. So, that's, I think, a big part of it. We can do anything we want in this town, because we have enough people who care about this place. We just have to make that connection.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the second of the Chamber's questions and it's going to begin with Greg. Greg, the city's Adams Street property is the largest city-owned property near downtown. As a council member, you will be in a decision-making position regarding this tremendous asset. While we're not asking for an answer on a specific project, do you support using the Adams Street property for commercial use, including a hotel, assuming the project meets all the necessary codes and requirements?
So, this is a controversial piece of property. My personal belief, after thinking long and hard about this, is that we need to find a way to bring this back to the people. You want to talk about community involvement and getting their input? I think we need to bring this to the ballot in some way, shape, or form. I don't know the exact path of doing it, but I think we need to poll the people in a democratic process and figure out, do you want to keep this? I proposed this before when we were talking about Measure D. Do you want to keep this? If you want to keep this as a community-serving asset, whatever that means, we're going to have to impose some type of tax on ourselves, because there's an opportunity cost to not selling it. And I think we need to see if the people are into that. If they're not, then we should be proceeding with the sale for some type of use, probably the highest and best economic use, so that that can then be used to rectify our other financial woes. But we've owned this piece for quite some time. My understanding is that it was, you know, initially purchased to try to avoid development of a large Safeway on that site and it was thought of as a piece that could be a community-serving parcel over time. So, if we're going to change that so drastically, I think we need to get everyone to buy into it. And I think the way to do it is through a democratic, the most democratic process out there, which is a vote.
Thank you very much. Sharon, do you support using the Adams Street property for commercial use, potentially a hotel?
Well, I do support using the Adams Street property for commercial use, including a hotel, partially for several reasons. As part of the visioning process that we undertook, I think the most recent one was 2009. That was a part of it. So, I do think that people in the community support it. But I'm also, this, I agree with Mary that this is one of our most, possibly one of our most valuable assets and so, I do think it's critical that whatever happens with that piece, the public is provided with an open and thoughtful process. But the bottom line is, the realistic bottom line is, we aren't going to be able to do any development on that property, the city ourselves, unless there's some sort of commercial piece to it.
Thank you very much. Mary, your comments? Thank you very much. Mary, your comments?
I'd start by saying I support looking at Adams for commercial use. I'm a big believer in that you, you can't make good decisions if you don't have good information. And I think at this point, we need to really understand our financial need before we decide whether we're going to sell our biggest asset. So we need some updated forecasting after the election and when we, where we know where we stand with respect to the Measure D. If we need to revenue, revenue is certainly, you know, we should look at it. We should look at all of our assets. And hotels near downtown, I think, offer a benefit to our downtown businesses that hotels away from downtown do not provide. So I certainly, in my view, it's a better location for a hotel than some others. I think we need expert advice here. You know, we need a company that specializes in these kind of transactions and knows the players and can bring them to the table. Because I think it's most important that if we do this, we have a company that has a track record, that has financing and can actually get something built within the timeframe that people are talking about. So I would suggest that we would develop a model that we could live with as a community based on the benefits and the costs. And I'm talking about water. I'm talking about housing, workforce housing. Where's it going to go? Not necessarily on Adams, but we need to look at all of the ramifications of changing the use of the property. And my personal view would be to try to keep some of it just for public use. I'm not in favor of the proposals I've seen that take the entire property away from the town, essentially.
Thank you. Jeff, your comments?
I think something to keep in mind is that we have two two-lane roads that feed the entire Up Valley. And we have a bunch of different entities trying to develop Up Valley. We have the county, we have Calistoga. We need to understand the capacity of our roads to supply businesses. How many businesses can we approve along a two-lane road, two two-lane roads? I think it goes to looking at a cost-benefit analysis of an overall plan for how we want to develop. If we do things piecemeal, we're going to run into trouble. And even if we have a, a plan for St. Helena, if we don't integrate it with a county plan and a discussion with Calistoga and Yountville and Napa as well, we're going to run into a capacity problem. So if, if we look at Adams Street and develop it separately from what we're doing in the rest of the town in terms of water, in terms of traffic, we already have a traffic situation that is metastasizing as we speak because our communities are not communicating with each other. So I think that we need to look at an overall plan, cost-benefit analysis with expert help. And if a commercial use is put on Adams Street, I believe it needs to be small and less obtrusive and balanced with what the community visioned for that, for that property. It was never envisioned to be a commercial space. I like it as an open space. I think that's great. But if, if the community wants it as a community center, if we can support it with, with some sort of other revenue source, great. If a small hotel needs to be looked at, that can be looked at, but it has to be balanced with impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, do you have any follow-up comments?
I'd just like to add that clearly we can get some expert help to figure out what the best path is. But if we don't get buy-in from this community, we're going to fight over that parcel for 10 years, maybe longer. There'll be litigation. And, and so I'm, I'm, I really believe that we need to get the community to buy into what we're going to do that, with that property in general, before we embark on a path of studying lots of options and hiring. We should get some, you know, some, some, we've, we've done that. We've gotten three people that have given us some ideas. But the reality is, if we don't have buy-in from the community, we'll be stuck, right? We might think we're going down the path and then we'll, we'll find out that, you know, a local group has filed a lawsuit against whatever we're trying to do. So let's figure out, do we want to keep it or do we want to get rid of it? Once we figure that out, bring in the experts.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to the third chamber question, and this is going to be directed first at Sharon. Sharon, Main Street is a vital part of our authentic small-town charm. The businesses along Main Street suffer from inadequate sidewalks, disruptive trees, and no restrooms for customers. While a lot of this infrastructure is another example of projects we cannot address due to the financial situation, the restrooms are something that we can. The city has included the public restrooms in their 2016, 2017 budget. This project has been promised by two previous councils and is almost ready for design review before the planning commission. Given what the outcome may or may not be on Measure D, is this a project that you would sacrifice if cuts are needed?
That's a tough question, Katie. I, you know, and, and like I said, we can solve a lot of problems with money, but it's, our hands are tied if, if we don't. And I think we would have to look at the cost of, of what those restrooms are. They are in the budget, so, but we are going to have to make some hard choices. There's no question about it if Measure D does not pass. I want to see those restrooms happen. I think that they're important. We haven't had them. I mean, I've had instances, even when my children were little and they had nowhere to go to the restroom. So they are a critical piece. It's important to our businesses, and I really, really believe that they need to stay in the budget. But right now, I can't say 100% that they would stay in the budget because I would only be one vote out of five.
Thank you very much. Mary, your comments?
Well, you know, I know restrooms have been on the table for six years, but library services and recreation and nice parks have been a part of St. Helena forever. And if we get to the point where we have to start cutting because Measure D doesn't pass, this is where I would ask the residents, what is their preference? These are their services, and I think at that point, it's up to them. I don't see the problem of putting a public restroom on hold for a few years if we can, if we need to do it in order to still satisfy the residents that their other services are being met to the standard that they want. So I, I'm all for the residents weighing in on this if we get to that point.
Thank you. Jeff?
I, I agree with that. I think that we want to, we want our, we want our businesses to feel that they're being supported, that, that the town is behind them so that, so that, so that customers feel happy to, to stop and be here. However, if more and more services get cut from the residents, we lose, we lose the support and we lose the trust of the community, and then people start to move away. I mean, this is a, this is a fine line issue because it's, because we care about both aspects, because we care about the businesses in this town. We love the businesses in this town and we love our residents. And so how do we, how do we do it? Can we make a, a less expensive bathroom? You know, if we have to make cuts to the library, can we make a less expensive bathroom? Is there a way to, is there a way to, to balance how the cuts come so that a high-level project like that, it's not black and white? It's not 100% this or 100% that. Is it a, is it, if we're cutting something on the library, do we cut something on the, on the bathroom? So that's, that's, that's a tough one, yeah.
They're all tough ones, aren't they? Greg, your comments?
So, you know, if we assume that Measure D doesn't pass, what does that mean? We're not, we're not willing to increase the sales tax, which, by the way, Measure D partly impacts us, but a lot of that is going to be borne by visitors as well. I think it's really important for the public to understand that and to support Measure D so we won't have to make these really difficult decisions. That said, if it doesn't, I, I agree with everyone's opinion here. We're going to look to the public. But the one thing that I would commit to is sprucing up, spending some amount and allocating some amount of budget, at least on one vote if I'm still on, towards the bathrooms in Lyman Park to make them nicer and make sure that they're up-kept more frequently so that the businesses temporarily can at least send people to those bathrooms. They're, and they'll be in good shape, slightly remodeled, painted, maybe, you know, spruced up a little bit and, and better tended to while we figure out where to find the revenue to build the project, which is now 90% design complete and ready for, ready for planning commission review. So it'd be unfortunate to not be able to execute, but we'd have to weigh that against other services that might be lost. But I do think we could, we could use Lyman Park bathrooms as a Band-Aid on a temporary basis.
Thank you very much. Sharon, do you have any follow-up comments?
Well, I agree with Greg that, that the, not just Lyman Park, but the Church Street bathrooms could also be spruced up. In fact, that should probably happen irregardless of, of, of this other bathroom project that comes on because it's pretty embarrassing. I don't know if any of you have been in there, but it's not good a lot of the time. So anyway, I, I agree with, I agree with Greg. I mean, and I'm also hoping that not just Measure D, but the increased revenue we get from Los Alcubas will help with this issue as well, and we won't have to make this kind of a choice.
Thank you. Okay, the chamber's fourth and final question will be directed first to Mary. Mary, we're in the final phases of approving a general plan, and the timeframe for adoption is early next year. Will you follow the schedule that the staff has identified to move the general plan forward? Or is it your intent to further revise and delay the general plan and/or take it back to the drawing board?
Gee, I almost take that personally. At the moment, we don't have a schedule because we don't know what's happening with the EIR. The planning commission has been told that it's going to have to go out for review one more time because there were some errors in the second go-round. So we're not working with a schedule. I'm not sitting there to revise the general plan at the planning commission level. I'm sitting there to listen to what people have to say about it. And I think the major issue I had with it was actually one that the whole planning commission had with it, which was that a whole proposed zoning district was coming into the plan at the last minute and the entire community had not had the opportunity to vet it or understand it. And we voted unanimously in April to remove it. I don't think I've been dickering with the plan since then in any way that's kept it from moving along on schedule. I, I felt the need to speak up more strongly about it in April because we hadn't made, or in May, we had made a decision and the staff came back and asked us to reconsider our decision. And so I felt it was important at that time to lay out my understanding of some of the negative consequences that perhaps had not been foreseen. I mean, I know Greg was a big proponent of this. I know Sharon is. I know they're concerned about density. But if you really understand zoning, you know that this isn't necessary to keep our densities where they are. And it has some negative consequences that really are inconsistent with the housing policy that we just adopted in 2015. So I felt it was incumbent on me to, to point that out. I don't regret it. I think it nearly cost me my position on the planning commission. But if you, you know, if you want to hear that kind of analysis and talk and thoughtful consideration from your planning commission members, I'll bring the same thing to the table if I'm lucky enough to be elected to the city council.
Thank you very much. Jeff, your comments, please?
I think the general plan is close, but there are elements that need to be looked at. The tourism element in the past has been very restrictive. As it's written now, I feel it's been left too open and it needs to come somewhere in the middle. I think that needs to be discussed. There's a, the zoning, the Adams Street zoning issue, I think, needs to be looked at in the general plan. And the winery element. One thing we've learned over the last number of years is that there have been changes in the wine business, how they do business. And it's a different business model that's much more dependent on direct-to-consumer sales and visitation. Now, these elements create far more impacts on our shared common resources like roads and water. These changes in the wine business are happening anywhere the wine business is. It's happening all over California. It's happening in Virginia. And it's basically taking ag parcels and turning them into commercial parcels. And, and a lot of times, it's happening without the neighbors knowing. And so the winery element needs to be examined to make sure that wineries, because now it's a hybrid. It's not just a winery. It's a, it's a residential and, I mean, a, a retail and it can be an event center and maybe not appropriate in a residential area. So we need to, or in a school zone. So we need to address the winery issue also in the general plan. A few elements need to be looked at before it gets pushed forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
I'm a proponent of adopting the general plan as quickly as we can. I do want to make everyone aware of the genesis of this, this low-medium zoning because I think there's some misunderstandings. And the, the city council actually hasn't seen it since we last discussed it. What we discussed was, low's great. Medium, there seemed to be a mismatch with respect to what's actually built in our community and the range that could be possible with medium. And so the suggestion was, let's look at that and let's talk about adjusting that range for medium. And we all agreed that we would pass our housing element and we'd come back and look at that at a future point. Consultant managing the, the general plan and the EIR goes off, creates this low-medium density. And so we, as a council, haven't seen that. It wasn't the intention to create another zoning classification, but instead to take a hard look at what we have in our community. And our, our general plan does say to, you know, preserve and protect our neighborhoods and our community and that makeup with respect to how it, how it looks today. And right now, there is a mismatch. So I think that it's something we have to look at. I don't believe, I, that we have to do it right now. I think we can do it after we pass the general plan. I think it's more important to get the general plan passed and then come back and take a holistic view of our zoning in, maybe in the entire town if that's what the community wants to do. We haven't done that in a long time. And so that's my position on it.
Thank you very much, Greg. Sharon, your comments, please?
I also agree that the general plan needs to be passed, and we need to really focus on getting, on making that happen because it does hamper everything else that goes on in this town. As many of you know, we spent an entire year going through the whole document, word for word, with public input. And now it's, it's working its way back around, and it will come back to the city council for further input. And I would be open to that, whatever the public feels was not addressed in any of the past rounds. But we really need to expedite the process and get it, and get it going. It's a general plan, not a specific plan, and it can be amended. And so I think that it's really important so that everybody knows what our government, governing document is.
Thank you, Sharon. Mary, do you have a follow-up?
Well, I, I'd just like to clarify what the status is. I mean, the plan is essentially almost ready to go to the council. I mean, we're waiting to see this, the responses to the EIR, and then if we have to go through it one more time, we'll look at those. But the planning commission has been trying to tee this up to get it there as soon as we can. And we have already formulated a list of recommendations and commentary on what we're suggesting based on everything that's come to us. So although I recognize there are some issues that people are maybe not fully satisfied with at this point, I think we need to adopt it and then we need to get to the business of amending it. We can do it quarterly if we want to, and we can focus more on specific issues. But I think it's ludicrous to just keep going on without it. We need to focus on other things.
Thank you very much. Candidates, at this point, we are going to take a 10-minute break, and we'll see you back here for segment two in 10 minutes. Thanks so much. Thanks so much. Okay, welcome back. We're going to begin Segment Two, which consists of four questions. Each question has been submitted by one of the candidates, and these are questions that they're going to ask of each other. Each candidate will have an opportunity to respond to the question. So we begin with Jeff Ellsworth's question, and this is going to be responded to first by Greg. "In the past four to eight years, there have been numerous incidents of fiscal mismanagement in the city, including co-mingling of separate funds and a large $1.9 million payback of misused funds. Incidents such as these have added to serious concerns about St. Helena's financial situation. What oversight measures or mechanisms would you suggest to prevent such occurrences as these in the future?"
So we have had oversight measures in place. They weren't strict enough. And we now have a higher level of accountability and reporting that has to occur. And we have modified procurement practices and policies with respect to buying things and thresholds. And we have also changed our auditing firm and have a new policy on that. But at the end of the day, the most important thing is to have a city manager in place that you can rely on and trust, who is bound by efficacy practice that's self-imposed. And that's what we have. And that's who we hired as a council to lead this city out of fiscal disarray and towards rebuilding our staff. And now we're working on rebuilding that trust. The level isn't there yet, but with someone that is bound by the ethical oath and takes their profession very seriously, I think that's ultimately the best safeguard. We get lists and reports of the checks that were written, but the reality is that check for the $1.9 million was left off that list intentionally. And so we need to pursue that. And I can't say much on that, but we are looking into that and pursuing it. But at the end of the day, it comes down to the professionals you hire and their ethical values in making that right hire and retaining that quality of professionals.
Thank you very much. Sharon, your comments, please.
Well, actually, it dates back more than eight years. The $1.9 million, those dollars, were spent between 2003 and 2008. So -- and the accounting errors were in 2010 and '11. So I completely agree with Greg. None of us were accountants. We were getting reports from our auditors saying everything was fine. We never saw any check pass by on our monthly statements for the $1.9 million. And we had no idea that the finance director was using the same money to pay back two different loans. It was just as shocking and horrifying to us as it was to the public. What we've done now is we have more quarterly -- we have quarterly reporting. We have a new auditor. We have a fantastic new finance director. It was actually our staff that found a fantastic new finance director. It was actually our staff that found the second accounting errors and brought it to the attention of the public and the state. That had not even been uncovered. And so, it's really important that we do have a leadership that is transparent, and I think we have that now. So, I think the public can really move forward and know that the finances are in good hands.
Thank you very much. Mary, your response to Jeff's question?
Well, I definitely think some good steps have been taken with respect to reporting. I think I'd like to see it even more frequently. There's so many things on the council agenda. What's wrong with another consent item where you, you see an update to the report that you saw the last time? I think it's incumbent on the council to make sure that they have competent staff in these positions. I think our finance department has done an amazing job over the last year. But in the end, you can't just leave it up to the professionals you hire because they come and go. And it's the council and the citizens who are here afterwards. So, I think it's really important that all these policies be put out in writing so that it's not a mystery of what should be happening to any new council member or to any new finance director who might, might come in, and that the council needs to keep its hands on it. It's, it's not something that we can just totally rely on our administration to provide the oversight.
Thank you. Jeff, this was your question. What comments would you like to make about this subject?
I've got to answer my own.
Yes.
Something, you know, with thresholds where if something's above a certain amount, it's required to, to pass by the council, that there's a double signature situation where not just one person can make the decision if it's above a certain amount. I think that if, if the, if the auditing situation is better now where it's, where it's, the auditor is changed out at a certain amount of time, but that, but that those policies are all clear, clearly stated. And that, that, you know, it's, it is the, the city council that is the oversight committee. And so, that's where the, the final look has to come from. And so, I don't think that we can put it in somebody's hands and say that's enough. I think that's, that's fine. But it's, you know, trust but verify, you know, so that we, we just double check everything and make sure, and we have a system in place to do that.
Thank you. So, this part of, this segment of the debate is a little bit more conversational in style. So, if you feel that you do want to respond to a comment, just sort of raise your hand and let us know. We'll try to make time for that. Thank you.
So, those safety measures have been put in place, and they do exist. And no one's saying that we're going to leave it up to the staff. We watch it like a hawk, and we are reviewing these things. And at the end of the day, even if you do that, if you have staff that isn't trustworthy, they're going to hide things from you. And you might not have a way to detect that early. Okay? So, our comment about having trustworthy staff is so that that doesn't happen. But at the end of the day, clearly, the council is the over, the oversight committee. But we have increased the scrutiny with respect to thresholds that are required for certain expenses and, and taken the measures that Jeff has outlined.
Okay. Any other comments before we move on?
I mean, we, we can't, and I agree with Greg. It's just challenging. We are the policymaking body, and the, the city manager and the staff execute that policy and do the day-to-day business of the city. So, it's challenging when those, the data presented is inaccurate.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Question number two will come from, this is Greg's question, and it will be first addressed to Sharon. How suited are you and positioned to understand what the community really wants here? How long have you lived here, and how have you previously served our community?
Well, I think I'm very, very well-suited to understand what the community wants. I've lived here. Our family has had property in Napa Valley since 1993, and I have lived, we moved to Rutherford in 2001 and into St. Helena in 2003. My kids have grown up here. They've gone to school here. They've played on sports teams here. My husband was the scoutmaster of the Boy Scout troop here for several years, heavily involved in that. We have lots of friends and neighbors. We talk to people. So, I really feel that I have a, and this is a complicated little town. It is a complicated little town, and I believe it takes, it takes a while to really get your finger on the pulse of what, what people want. So, and also, just the last years, eight years being on the council, I've talked to so many people, and I receive emails from so many people voicing their opinions.
Okay, great. Mary, your comments on this question?
I don't think that your ability to understand what people want or what they're concerned about necessarily depends on how long you've lived here. If I did, there's no way I'd be running for this position. I think it certainly helps. But in my view, the way I've tried to do my work and what I think is important is to not marginalize anybody's input. I try to meet with as many people as I can, listen to them, ask them questions, try to learn from them, try to understand their position and what the basis is of it. I've had some people tell me they think I'm crazy for talking to this person or that. But as far as I'm concerned, you know, we're a big community, and everybody's got valid opinions. And I think what we really need to do, and one of the things I'm going to try to push for, is develop a forum where people feel free to do that more often on issues that are before the community. You know, it could start with more town halls, more ad hoc committee meetings where people who really understand issues can bring them forth. But I also think we need to develop some mechanism to just talk in a more informal basis about issues.
Great. Thank you so much. Jeff, your comments as to Greg's sort of resume question?
Well, I grew up here in St. Helena. We moved here when I was five. I went through the elementary school in RLS. My family was in the wine business. My, my parents had a company called The Complete Wine Maker. We supplied winery equipment to little wineries all over, and big wineries all over Napa County and elsewhere since the 1960s. There's a picture of me in a little, in a wine box in 1963, when my dad was the winemaker at Maya Commiss. So, you know, I, I understand the roots of the wine business here and the agricultural nature of our area. I went to Justin Sienna to high school, which is a Catholic school. I'm not Catholic. But that was a great experience for me in learning how to understand where another kind of thought process is coming from. I, I spent time at the farmer's market every, every summer, selling my paintings. I feel like I'm tied to this community as much as sometimes, you know, I, I want to get away too. But I love this place, and I feel committed to making sure we keep the balance here and keep our agricultural roots as we, as we move forward. Because that's what, that's what this place is. It's an agricultural area. We're trying to keep it so that this thing that somehow got built here, we can sustain it. And it's a beautiful thing that people from all over the world come, come see. So, how do we keep it, balance it? And I think it is that communication and having more, one of the things as we're doing this campaign, talking to people in small groups and neighborhoods, and having the trust there so that people will open their doors.
Great, thanks. So, Greg, this was your question. So, what is your suitability for serving?
I certainly haven't lived here as long as Jeff. Wish I had a picture of myself in a, in a box, somewhere in the Napa Valley. I grew up in Boston. But, look, I think at the end of the day, we, we as a council, and when I was on the planning commission and previous, you know, in the, in the general plan update steering committee role, we did a lot of outreach. We continue to do a lot of outreach. And no matter how much outreach you do and how much public comment you try to seek, you're never going to get everyone's opinion. And undoubtedly, there's always someone that shows up at the last minute that hasn't been paying attention. And I always say, you know what? We need to stop and listen to that person. Just because they're late, because they're busy, we all have busy lives, we're doing a lot of different things, we're volunteering our time here, doesn't mean that your, your voice shouldn't be heard. So, I firmly believe that, and I practice that. And I'm always consistently saying, look, if someone wants to talk, let's reopen the public comment. And so, but the, the reason I ask this question is I think that at the end of the day, you, there's a certain understanding of St. Helena. It is quirky. There are a lot of competing sort of objectives. And if you haven't been here for some time and interacted with a lot of folks and really gotten to understand the fabric and the ethos of this place, it's going to be hard to represent what the people want. And so, I believe that through, through all of my activities, I have a, not as, as long as Jeff's been here, but a pretty good understanding of what this place is all about and what we need to do to preserve the charm and the character. I'm concerned that we've preserved it so well that now everyone wants to come and have a second home here because it's such a great place. And so, now my mind's going to, how are we going to preserve our community in the sense of housing stock so that we don't lose that charm? So, but I digress. Coming back to it, it's, it's important that, in my opinion, that someone have experience in this community to really understand, you know, what's right for this community on a future and forward basis.
Okay. Before we move on, are there any other comments on this subject? Mary?
I think you just have to have a commitment to do the work and to talk to people and understand what's going on. I recognize I have some shortcomings because I haven't, wasn't born here and haven't been pictured in a wine box. But it's a matter of who you are and how open you are to listening to people. And, you know, I don't shut the door on anybody because of where they live or what group they belong to or what they think about one particular issue. And I think that's really the key to it, to understanding what people are thinking. It's not necessarily how long you lived here. That's a big help, no doubt, but it's not the only thing.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to Sharon's question, and it will be directed first to Mary.
Okay.
What have you done to proactively address affordable housing in our town?
This is an interesting question because I think mine is going to be quite similar. At this stage, I'm not in a position to do a lot proactively, other than try to get the town to develop some sort of housing plan, which, if I'm lucky enough to be appointed to the council, is one of the things that I would put as a high priority that the council work on, notwithstanding the fact that we don't have any money. I think it's important for us to look at the issue in all the sectors of housing, the second homes, affordable housing, workforce housing, looking at Vineyard Valley, you know, possibly rent control. I have a number of ideas about what we should be doing, and I think that the council should get to work on that because it's one of the issues that is really affecting the fabric of the community and making people feel like it's not the St. Helena that they grew up in.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, your comments about affordable housing and what you have contributed or any ideas about that subject?
Well, I will admit that I have not contributed greatly to, to it because, you know, I also haven't really been in the position to. My thoughts about it are that we need it. We need workforce housing. A big part of that is that, as we all see, are, is the hollowing out of the community where families, kids, there's less and less of that. And the worry that a school will close because there's not enough kids left, that happens in, in other communities. We don't want it to happen here. I think that if affordable housing, I don't like to see affordable housing used as a, a tool to get a project approved, and then they pay into a fund for affordable housing. I think the affordable housing needs to be built. I think the, the numbers that we are required to build is doable. We should, with every project that comes up and, and, and wants to discuss doing something here, we need to say, what are you going to do to make the affordable housing happen, rather than just putting it into a fund and deferring it? So, I think that's, that's where I come in on it. And then I also think we have to discuss how it's done so that it balances in neighborhoods. One of the concerns and worries is that somebody says, well, we need it, and it's just going to be a big project, and it's going to go over there, and it's not analyzed to how it impacts that neighborhood. So, is it, is it thinking about how we spread it out so that it's integrated and that it doesn't over-impact one area? Just like any project, like a hotel, anything, traffic impacts, water impacts in one area. Is it, is there a way to spread it out? But I think we need to be absolutely firm that projects that come in have to have that as a necessity, and it's about getting it built, not putting money into a fund.
Okay, thank you. Greg?
Clearly, it's, per my previous comments, this is one of our biggest issues, in my opinion, on a forward basis. And I'm not talking the next two years. I'm talking about 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now, and how we leave this place for our, for our kids and our grandkids and future generations. And I've given a lot of thought to this. And, you know, I first came here and observed for, you know, the first eight years, what I noticed was groups fighting over projects, larger projects that were proposed and essentially hitting deadlock. You know, neighborhood groups were formed to fight projects. And I said, well, there's got to be a, a better way to do this. And I remember being in a planning commission meeting when a, a concerned local citizen came and said, look, we need to take the high road here. We need to find a better way to do housing in our community. And, and then I started to engage in some discussions with this individual and some of the housing advocacy groups, or the one housing advocacy, advocacy group, to talk about, you know, how do we find a win-win common goal and vision for housing in this community? And what it's led to is the embracing of, and lots of hours of talk and lots of thought, it's led to the embracing of a, you know, the idea of small infill projects, really what Jeff's saying, integrated projects that are more financially feasible. Well, they're still a tough road to hoe, and it requires some philanthropy at the end of the day. Or what we did, which was acquire a site and then give it to our town, or not give it, but sell it to our town as a city. We didn't do it. The city did it. We made the decision for, for a dollar so they could move forward with the McCorkle project. And I think that I'm hoping, I'm very hopeful that that will serve as a model for the future where we can not only do that, but then replicate that. And so, that's where I'm focused. Now, the city's never, no matter what we do, whether it's a transfer tax or sales tax, we're not going to have enough money to be able to, we're losing housing stock quicker than we can replace it. We'll not have enough money to, to do the job entirely as a city from tax revenue at the end of the day. We need to look to philanthropy on a forward basis. We need to create a model, create a vision, create a goal, and then reach out to our community and say, look, is this what we believe in? And if it is what we believe in, let's all get behind it, and let's make it happen, and let's make it a reality. Because if we lose housing, not just for low and very low, but also for moderate, we're going to lose our community at the end of the day. And that's, like I said, that's my biggest concern.
Okay, thank you. Sharon, this was your question. So, what are your comments on this?
Well, this was my question because in the few forums that I have been involved in, it seems like the affordable housing question was invisible. Nobody was talking about it. And it's become more and more important to me, maybe because I'm the only candidate or person on the council with payroll, with employees who are looking for places to live. And I am, like Jeff, I like Greg, concerned about low income but also moderate income because those, those residents are being priced out of town. Publicly, I, it's frustrating as a city because we don't have revenue, and so, we can't solve a lot of problems. But I'm proud of the fact that we did purchase the McCorkle property, and that we were able to work with our town. And now, we're going to have eight families owning their own homes there, which I think is really exciting. And I really would like to encourage more of that type of integrated projects. I'm also proud of the fact that we're trying, we come, we came up with a creative solution, and we're hopefully moving forward on the Turley Flats project on Pope Street. The city's invested almost half a million dollars in that so far. And we did the Stonebridge Rehabilitation Project too. So, that's publicly, I think that we need to see more creative approaches and maybe on a public-private level. Privately, in my personal life, our family invested in the 90s in a apartment project for the firefighters, and that was a great model that I would love to see encouraged in the future. We also, my husband and I purchased a home in the, on Vineyard and Doris, and we rented it to a low-income family for 16 years at a below-market rate, and we intend to continue to do that. I also, I know a lot of people don't believe that the second units will be used for housing, but my vineyard manager lives in the second unit at my house. So, it does work. And I think if people are encouraged... And I think if people are encouraged and see models of that, um, this is a very microcosm level, level for me personally, but it would be great if 25 other people in this town did that. And I think that what, what Greg, um, was alluding to is the philanthropy aspect of it. And I think it's important because, um, it does have been big impacts on our, um, community as a whole. Um, you know, I'm very excited that the CIA may be building, um, another dorm because frankly, that has eviscerated, um, our, our housing stock in terms of three-bedroom housing units. I don't know if people know that, but they've been renting it for their students, driving up the prices, making it very challenging for other families. Um, so anyways, I just think it's an important part of the conversation and important part of, and it's important issue in this election too.
We agree. Yes, you have another?
Well, um, I did fail to mention that, um, when I, when I did take a look at the zoning ordinance and what was, uh, proposed, I did recognize that dropping densities in a major part of town was going to make these infill projects that everybody loves so much, uh, impossible because they were going to exceed the density limits in, in the district. I also recognized that what this new district was going to do was it was going to concentrate the affordable and workforce housing in a few areas of town, rather than spreading it around, which was, uh, has always been our policy. I recognized that it was going to prevent, uh, homes, uh, from being converted to duplex and triplex units, which by the way, is something we already allow in our zoning. So i- if I've had an opportunity to take a proactive position, I guess that was it.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
So, um, I've actually had a discussion with, with Mary, with our town and also with Noah House about the fact that, well, first off, the low-medium shouldn't happen, but if we adjusted medium, we can easily include a bonus, um, such that you can get to the same level of housing units within, say, a medium zone on a half acre or an acre lot. My concern with medium is that right now that mismatch is going to lead potentially, once developers realize, oh, all the homes that we can flip have been flipped and redone, they're going to say, oh, well, wait a second, maybe, maybe in the land cost is too high, right? Maybe we can buy something that is a little bit more, but we'll create four or five units that are high-end condos and we'll sell them for second homes. And then we start to see that proliferation. And so that's why I'm, I'm concerned about what medium ultimately ends up being, uh, and that we don't create, and I don't think it's going to happen in the next five or 10 years, but I think 15, 20 years from now, we might see that type of activity. We just, we need to be talking about it and looking forward to it. But there is a solution, if we do adjust those ranges, where you can have a bonus, um, for affordable housing so that that type of impact doesn't occur.
Got it. Well, that's kind of a, a transition into Mary's question, which is our final of the candidates' questions. And we've actually tacked on an additional question to yours because we feel that it's important to get, uh, a, a whole picture on this. Um, so this will be directed at Jeff first. Uh, Jeff, what role do you think the city and the council should play in, with respect to affordable housing? And what role do you think businesses should play in that same respect?
Well, I think, I think we're all working together here and that's, it's finding that balance. One of the big disappointments with the Los Alcobis project was I, I think it was 22 or 23 units were, were there that were supposed to be affordable housing and then that was changed and money did go into a fund, but we actually lost, lost the units. So that's a, a place where business and the city can work together by having this, uh, uh, a housing policy in place that talks about this and has a plan that says, look, we want to make sure in 20 years, and I think Greg's point is excellent and he's looking forward and saying, what's it going to be in 20 years? So if we start having a housing policy that addresses this so that we know that younger families can move in here and keep this community, um, uh, vibrant, it's, it's great for the residents and the businesses. So a policy that says when a, when a project is coming in, it, it is necessary that they work with the city to come up with, um, a way to, uh, to make sure that the, the housing gets built. But we also always have to balance that, once again, with two two-lane roads coming up valley, businesses are being approved all over, you know, up valley. We've got to actually probably work with the county in Calistoga also to make sure that everything is balanced. Um, so that's where the, the count, the city does the city's work. Businesses, we all have to work together. And it's tough because, you know, we all want to prosper and, and get what, you know, we want to, we want to succeed. But we've got to find a way to, uh, uh, the most, what's more important than that is our community and we, that we all balance and succeed together. So it, it's got to be integrated.
Thank you. Greg, your thoughts about the city and the business and how do we move the needle?
I think we need to continue to be proactive. When the McCorkle lot, um, came up for sale, we, we saw an opportunity to buy a lot that could be redeveloped as multiple units. And the city made a quick decision to do that. And now it's leading to, um, a great project, uh, that is part of this longer-term strategy. I think that we need to be, we need to continue to be proactive and we don't have the funds now, but we can come up with a plan and we've started working on a plan. Then we need to figure out where are we going to get the funds from, um, from whatever source so we can be ready to acquire key lots that could be redeveloped, um, throughout our entire city, not in any specific location, um, as, as infill, uh, multi-unit properties. And so, but we need to be really creative about where that money's going to come from. And I think that the, the city, I'm, I'm willing to spend my time outside of city council efforts to, to work on those efforts and I'm, I'm actually in the process of doing that. Um, as for businesses, I think we can start by supporting Measure D, which I think most businesses do, so that we'll have more revenue for the city, so we'll have, um, time to, and, and, and resources to develop a long-term strategic housing plan. Um, part of our issue as a city is we haven't been properly staffed. We have made progress on a lot of things. We created a new, a new park, we've put in bike paths, we've got a bike plan, we're preparing for Measure T passing so we can get our roads fixed and so on and so forth. But we haven't had, um, ample revenue, resources, staff and time to explore a lot of these things. I think that while Measure D helps us get back to, um, where we need to be with respect to not dipping into our reserves and building our reserves, it's also going to give us a little bit more breathing room so we can focus on this really important task at hand.
Thank you. So Sharon, what role should the city play and what role should business play?
Um, well, the city's role is to put policies in place to encourage, um, affordable housing. And one of the critical things, I think, if we had the revenue, um, would be to hire an economic development director who could actually seek out these type of, um, parcels that, that Greg is referring to, but also seek out public-private partnerships, um, with groups that would be interested in doing this. I disagree a little bit with, um, Jeff on some of these issues. I do think we need to see a balance. One of the, he, he referenced the Los Alcobis project. There were, um, approximately 20, um, units that were not regulated affordable units. Um, they were cheap because they were danger, they were not... I, I had an opportunity to visit them and a lot of them were not in very good condition. So, um, you know, we, if we had not, um, and the planning commission originally turned that project down because of the loss of affordable housing. The council overturned that, um, and the, and Los Alcobis put money into the housing fund, which we directly used to purchase the McCorkle Street property. So we have to balance it because if we didn't have the Los Alcobis project coming online, our fiscal situation would be very, very dire. So, um, and, and that could easily, that project could easily have not happened. Um, so we really have to be cognizant of all of those kinds of things. I don't necessarily think we need to make businesses pay to have it built, um, because sometimes that makes a whole project not pencil and it wouldn't happen and we would be giving up other sources of revenue, um, you know, and on some level, we would be shooting ourselves in the foot. I do think though, that there are other creative ways, um, you know, the one affordable housing complex in our town that, that works is Vineyard Valley. Um, those units are affordable and they have remained affordable. So if that, if that, um, model could be replicated, um, I think that would be terrific. You know, I don't, I, I also know that at Vineyard Valley or in, in 55-plus communities, by law, 20% can be, um, under 55, um, homes. And so, if some of that could be, and that, and that's private property, I'm not saying that would be the city's position to force that in any way. But if people, if people in town were more open-minded about it, I think it would be an, a, a great option, for other families that didn't, didn't meet the age criteria.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
Well, this is one of the areas where I do think the city needs to be much more proactive. I think it's great that you bought the McCorkle lot, but that was more or less reacting to the fact that it was on the market and available. And I think that, uh, the city should make it a priority to develop a housing plan that, uh, first of all, runs the full gamut. You know, how are we going to engage the second homeowners who live here, engage them more in the community and try to get them to shop here and spend money here and be more a part of this community that they've come to love so much that they've moved in this weekend and that. Uh, we need to look at workforce housing, we look, look at affordable. You know, for Vineyard Valley, I think we have to, uh, think what might happen to Vineyard Valley that could cause it to go away and plan so that it doesn't. You know, we need to look at mobile home statutes and, uh, think about, you know, what we might be able to do to stop it from being converted to something else or to keep the rents from rising up there. Uh, one of the, uh, things that business can do, frankly, is what I would call mitigation. I'm of the camp, having worked for a private developer for a long time, uh, that believes that if you require certain things of developers and you're specific about them, they pencil them in to their projects if they have viable projects. And so, uh, I'm in favor of, uh, stronger affordable and workforce housing requirements on people who are building projects in the community that, particularly those that are bringing more workers here. As far as funding, um, I think we have to be, get, become a little more imaginative. I mean, we could have a transfer tax and we could earmark the money specifically for housing. If we decide to sell atoms and we find a big pot of money, maybe some of it should go towards housing. We own property. I don't want to forget that. You know, that's a big cost of the whole development picture. Uh, we should think about how we can put some of our own property to use. And, and maybe if we can't, maybe we can trade it with somebody else. Um, we need to look at our zoning. We have to be careful that we're not discouraging investment and upkeep in multifamily buildings that are here in town now. I think we need to strengthen our second unit regulations. I think what Sharon's experience is great, but I think it's not the norm. And every second unit that I've seen come to the planning commission in the last year, with the exception of one, uh, has really been a guesthouse for second home owners, owners, excuse me. I think when we look at our zoning ordinance, we look, have to look at, uh, this new mixed-use category that we're going to have, that has great potential for providing incentives to people to build commercial development along with housing perhaps on top. Uh, to me, you know, we can't just throw up our hands because we say we don't have any money. Uh, because the whole time we're sitting here, things are changing and we're losing opportunities. I'd like to see us develop a parallel market so that people could rent here and then they could possibly move into houses and when they're older, they can move into Vineyard Valley. People who cannot pay the market rents, but have another place to go in the community. Vineyard Valley, someplace else where they can still stay here and they don't have to leave.
Thank you.
Sorry.
How are we doing on time?
Can we add more to that?
I'm going to ask our timekeeper here. Yes? Okay, yes, go ahead.
So, and I think all of those are great ideas. Um, we've been talking about the transfer tax for some time and I just want to add that, you know, a model that did work, i- if you start making a transfer tax for something specific, A, we need to become a charter city, uh, we need to vote to do that. And then it actually requires a two-thirds vote if it's going to be allocated. So you've got to be mindful of that. So you've got to do something that people are really going to get behind. And I think we can get a lot of people behind affordable, but I think we need to be, we need to link it to something else as well. And that's exactly what Aspen did, who started dealing with this problem 20 years ago. And what they did was they, they linked their transfer tax, half, 1%, half of it goes to affordable housing, the other half goes to the preservation of the Wheeler Auditorium, which is this historic auditorium in downtown Aspen, sort of a treasure. And if we can find something that also strikes the chord of all of us, that's really important to us, whatever it is, supporting our parks, supporting, you know, whatever it is, in addition to housing, I think that's a viable option that we should absolutely be pursuing.
That's some really nice idea exchanges. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to our last segment, segment three, which, um, consists of questions from the audience. And I haven't seen any of these, so where's question number one here, right here? Yeah, we did have a lot of redundant questions and so we did our best to sort of combine them and choose those subject matters that seem to be of most interest to, to the public. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it won't come as any secret that some of the questions from the audience have to do with the property transfer tax. So this question will begin with Sharon. And, uh, the question is, given the cost of housing, how can a property transfer tax be justified? Will it hurt property owners and residents?
Well, we need to look at that. Um, you know, it's, St. Helena is somewhat unique in that we don't have a property ta- transfer tax. Many communities do. Um, and some, some people have floated the idea that, um, uh, the property transfer tax, if it is, as Greg was discussing, directed into certain areas, whether it be housing or promoting open space or parks or that kind of thing, can actually increase the value of your house to offset that. Sometimes, some people argue that the transfer tax is, um, subsumed into the value of the home and just becomes the, the normal course of business. Um, you know, I don't, I, I, I'm still on the fence about the transfer tax, to be honest. And so, um, I would need to look at it further and, and get the people's input.
Mary, can you answer this question and specifically address how will it hurt property owners and residents?
Yeah, I don't know that it will. Um, when there was polling done, when the council was looking at, uh, revenue enhancement measures, nearly 60% of people in town, uh, were, uh, favorable towards a transfer tax at that point. Every place I've lived, except St. Helena, has had a transfer tax and it eventually, it works its way into the calculus of the sale and purchase of a home, just like a broker's commission does. You know, it becomes part of the cost of doing, uh, business. I certainly think it's something that we, uh, any kind of tax, I think you need to talk about it with the community and people have to understand it. I think some people were concerned about the, going to the charter city route, um, and maybe not understanding that you can become a charter city with certain limited powers. It doesn't mean, you know, that the city can go crazy. Um, so, uh, the last thing I would mention about it is that a, a transfer tax is often structured with certain exemptions. So if you're talking about hurting people, there are certain exemptions, uh, people who don't have to pay the tax, certain types of transactions are not necessarily subject to it. So you, you can tinker with it and try to make it equitable.
Okay, Jeff, your comments, please.
When this came up, uh, last year, um, or earlier this year, I heard a lot of concern from the real estate community. So I think it's important to be, to be really sensitive to, to that, uh, to that, that community. Uh, that being said, from what I understand, that other, other areas do it, other cities do it, there may be a way for it to be successful for, for everybody, including the real estate community. If, if a town is well-kept and has funding, does that enhance the property values of each individual home? So does that add to the value of a home by having the, the funding for the city itself to, to be at, at its top level? And I think, I think part of this is going to other cities where they have it, it's already successful, and doing it with the real estate community here. So it's not something that, that's sort of like, well, we're doing this and you got to take it and like it. It's, let's do this together with everybody that's going to be affected.
Okay, thank you. Greg?
So i- it's actually, it's interesting because we, we do have a property transfer tax, it's just too low right now. And, um, on every sale, there's a $1.10 assessment per $1,000 of property value. We get half, county gets half, but it, you know, it leads to, you know, pennies, right? It's not a lot of money. Uh, what we're talking about is something that's much more impactful. But to put it into context, we're talking about, and I've talked with a lot of realtors about this, we're talking about, on every million, it's $10,000, okay? And if you believe, it, I think it's hard to do if you're not going to earmark it towards something that is community-enhancing, as Jeff has said, and that's really important. And if you, just like a school bond, for instance, you have better schools in the community, people know that your, your property is going to be worth more. It's why we support school bonds, okay? I think the same thing can be said for the property transfer tax. bonds, okay? I think the same thing can be said for the property transfer tax, as long as it's going towards something that is going to lift the overall value of the community. And if you're selling your house for $1 million and it's $10,000, I would argue that your house is worth incrementally more than that $10,000 expense because of the fact that we've put this property transfer tax in place. I do believe that the exemptions need to be looked at closely if we're going to explore it. For instance, maybe there's a threshold, if you've owned your house for some period of time. At the end of the day, losing our homes to second homes, when that happens, that's when we want to actually get those dollars so we can put them towards a fund to go out and build more housing for the housing stock that was lost at the end of the day. So, we can also look at, is it residential? Or, we haven't talked about commercial here. What about commercial properties? What if a winery sells for $100 million, right? What if a large development parcel sells for $20 million? Maybe we, I mean, not maybe, we should be looking at both. Maybe the community says, we don't want to do residential right now, we want a lower transfer tax for resi, and we want a higher one for commercial. But these are all things we absolutely have to be considering.
Okay, thank you very much. Sharon?
Oh, well, you started with me, but that's fine.
Oh, yeah.
What I'm wondering from Greg is, I don't know if it's legal to discriminate, whether you can just, whether you can impose a transfer tax on commercial and not residential, or vice versa. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. So, it's an interesting idea.
Yeah, I don't either, but we should look into it.
I do think that if we have a transfer tax, it should be earmarked.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this issue before we move on? Okay, we also had several people ask about Measure D. And this has to do with sort of, what are your Plan B, or Plan C, or even Plan D, if Measure D doesn't pass, or if Lo's Alcibus doesn't pan out to the revenue that we anticipated? What are you going to do next? Mary?
Well, you know, then we're going to be in the difficult situation of meeting with the community, first to figure out what we really have to do immediately, if anything. If it doesn't pass, we need really good updated financial information right at that point so we know where we're standing. And then, we might need to take some drastic measures while we figure out what to do next. And at that point, I think we have to be able to put everything on the table. I mean, we can't go one tax at a time and have them not occur. You know, at that point, I would start to look at other revenue measures, for instance. Evaluate them all and see what the need is for money and what they're going to do for you. And this is where I would talk about business. Gross receipts, you know, some of our probably most successful businesses in town are huge wineries that, most of their wine gets sold out of state and we don't get any transfer tax, or, excuse me, sales tax for it. And would a tiny, little gross receipts tax on those businesses really hurt them as much as it would help us? They're using our roads, they're using our infrastructure. It's something we should consider. Beyond that, I think that would really force us to take a close look at Adams and look at the property on Railroad, the teen center, and figure out what we're going to do. You know, maybe we're not going to build a new city hall, maybe we're going to find a way to renovate it. But I think you have to look at the whole picture at once if we get into that pickle.
Great, thank you. Jeff, what are your Plan Bs or Cs?
If Measure D doesn't pass, I think we pretty quickly have to start looking at these other two ideas for taxes, in, looking at business tax, looking at a transfer tax. I think that we should not use it as an excuse to rush into a rash decision on our assets like Adams. Part of our community here are the businesses that use St. Helena water that are outside of our town. And I mentioned something earlier about wineries that use St. Helena water and turn it into a commodity that they do very well on. And so, we, I believe at that point, if there, if there's a problem with Measure D, we reach out to our entire community that includes these businesses, wineries, that are benefiting from St. Helena water and bring them into the situation. I look at it kind of like a mother wolf and her puppies. These wineries are nursing off of the mother's milk of St. Helena, and if St. Helena is becoming depleted, they're part of the family and they can be part of the solution.
Okay, Greg?
So, I'm an optimist, and to me, Measure D will pass. It must pass. And that said, I've already begun taking a proactive step and reviewing our last long-term financial forecast. I'm going to sit down with the city manager to start to look at the details behind that and updating it to make, let's not wait until Measure D passes or doesn't. We need to be doing it now and looking at it. So, look, I agree with Jeff. I don't want to rush into any crazy plans. So, I think we, A, we're going to take a breath, right? B, we're going to step back and say, what are our other options? One of the things that I've noticed, actually Mary brought up, one of the highest, the top 25 sales tax generators is a cult winery that happens to be based in St. Helena. And they, they don't make the wine here, but they book the sales in St. Helena, okay? So, we actually get the sales tax. And if you don't buy it and pick it up right at their office, then you have to ship it to 55 degrees, or you don't ever, you know, get your wine. And I want to, I want to reach out to some of our other winery owners and see if there's a way to incentivize them to have more people actually book the sale here in St. Helena. So, like Mary said, we can actually get that tax for the sale that we're making, right? There's this weird little law that says if you ship it to another state, the sales tax goes to that state, even though the product was made here. And I think we need to look really hard at that and see if there's a way to turn that around. Because there's a lot of wine that's being sold out of this community that we're not getting the benefit of the sales tax for. And to me, you know, that deserves a hard look. So, I think we, again, take a breath, look at our options, and then schedule a number and series of town hall meetings to bring the community together and say, what are we going to do? Are we going to cut our services? If so, which ones, right? Is it the bathrooms? Is it library hours, God forbid? Or do we look, do we figure out how to, you know, ratchet down in other ways within our operations? Thank you.
Sharon?
Well, I'm an optimist also, so I am really hoping that Measure D passes. And I hope that all of you who are sitting out here tonight can spread the gospel. Because we are going to have to make some incredibly hard choices if it doesn't pass, because we're going to need short-term money. All of these other options, there's a lag time before they can be implemented. I agree with Mary, we are going to need some updated financials. We're going to need some updated budget analysis for each department in the city and to see where further cuts can be made. And it is not going to be easy at all. You know, and one of the, so we're going to have to evaluate every option. And one of the, one of the pieces to the evaluation is the speed with which they can happen. Because we are going to need the revenue right away. I'm not in favor of a gross receipts tax on businesses in town. I, you know, we have a hotel project right now, which has already been approved, the Vineland Station project. We maybe need to see what could happen to make that happen. You know, we're, we're going to have to look hard at other options and literally see what's going to happen. Because otherwise, the town is going to face some really drastic cuts. Because we, you know, there's certain things, I don't know if anyone listened to Jennifer's program, but there's certain things that we have to pay for. And then, certain things are optional, for lack of a better word. And the optional things are what people love about this town, and nobody wants to cut those. So, it's, spread the word.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on that subject before we move on?
I'd just like to comment that in, you know, over the last, I think about 12 months, we've seen our TOT grow from roughly $1,005, it's almost up to $2 million projected. And so, something's working, right? And without building anything new or bringing anything new online. And I think we need to look at, what is it that's, that's generated that? Is it just natural recovery? It's a pretty big jump, right? Or is it?
Chamber.
The chamber. You said it before I could. But I think we need to look hard at that. And, and again, the more demand to come to St. Helena, we have a couple of new restaurants that are opening up that I think are going to be fantastic, okay? Two Birds One Stone, while it's not in the city, it just recently opened, and it's getting great reviews. Charter Oak is going to open in the next year. And it's, you know, it's Chris Costow, Chef Costow. So, I think that's going to bring more demand naturally. And there's going to be this halo effect of, you've got to go to St. Helena, you should stay in St. Helena. Chris Cosentino, who is going to open up at La Salcoba. So, we're going to have this impact that I think will be positive. Because we, I believe that we can become, we can shift sort of the focus back up to St. Helena as the restaurant Mecca and destination. I can't talk anymore, but that will help us grow our TOT naturally and sales tax revenue.
Great, thank you. Okay, the next question from the audience, also, we got several comments about, is, has to do with citizen involvement. And you've spoken to that quite a bit tonight in some of your responses, that you would, you know, go to the citizenry and hear what, what, what we have to say. But some of them are talking about the low meeting attendance, you know, we don't have a lot of citizens coming to our meetings, we have fewer and fewer volunteers in our service organizations. How will you engage and be more involved with the citizens? And can you give us some specific examples?
I tried to get us to be able to have wine at meetings, but I was told that we can't do that.
Jeff, that question starts with you, sorry.
One of the things that I've learned in just the last month, starting this campaign, knocking on people's doors, is that people want, and I actually learned this three years ago. Somebody said, you know, we're busy raising our kids, we're busy with work, we can't get to the meeting. We want to have people that we elect represent us. But I think that the people who are elected have a responsibility then to be, to be the ones reaching out. And what I've seen as, as I've walked around the neighborhoods the last couple weeks, is that it's appreciated to knock on somebody's door and have a discussion with them and hear where they're coming from, even if they can't get to the meeting. And then, having small neighborhood gatherings where people are comfortable talking past three minutes. People can start talking, there can be a back and forth and a dialogue. And you start hearing what's really going on. It's like people start opening up. And so, I think that kind of engagement can sort of re-energize the citizens to knowing that they're being heard, even if they can't get to a meeting. Because it is a problem, it's hard to, for everybody to schedule. But if the council is a little more proactive about reaching out and saying, hey, this is not on the books, we don't have to do this, but we want to do this. We want to hear from people, and we're going to make the effort to go out there and, and hear what people are saying. And you feel it, too. You feel it in the tone of their voice. That it's appreciated.
Thank you very much. Greg?
Part of, and I think that's a great idea. On another note, what I've, what I've heard from people that specifically have served on some of our committees, that are subject to the Brown Act and it makes a hassle, but it is there for transparency and open government, and it's important so that we can have a level of trust. What I've heard from these committees is, we come, we do all this work, and then nothing ever gets done. And so, one of the things that we've proposed recently, and I'm hoping that it will work, is that we actually appoint each of the council members to these committees, not to be a member, but to participate in the meetings, to hear where things are going, such that they can help keep a reality check on the ideas that the group is coming up with, so that they don't come back after six months with a great idea that, by the way, we don't have the money to do, and we don't have the staff to implement. And so, there's been this frustration of, you just can't get things done. You know, it's, and things do take a while, even just, you know, I'm really proud of the fact that we have the, I know some people don't like the green paint, but we have this green bike lane that, that is along, you know, along Valley View into Crane, that is actually a safe route to school. It took two years to get that painted, just to put it in context. It's still, it's still, you know, it's mind-boggling to me. But that, that's one thing that the ACT did get done, but it took a long time. And so, you know, one of the discussions we've had is, can we set sort of, here are the goals, here are the things that we think we can accomplish, and things to focus on because it'll be funded for Measure T, for example, for the ATC, go out and focus on these. So, the expectations are there, and they don't feel like they've spent a year on this committee and gotten nothing done. So, I want to change the environment there for sure. And we've already started doing that.
Great, thank you. Sharon, your comments?
Well, I agree with Greg. And, you know, some of our committees are working well, though, actually, and they do accomplish quite a bit for our community. The Wreck and Parks Committee put on the Fourth of July show, Harvest Festival. So, and I'm really grateful for those volunteers. It's, it's challenging to get citizen involvement. It's very hard to get to a meeting at 6 o'clock on a Tuesday. Sometimes it's hard for me. So, you know, I can appreciate how hard it is to get here, and especially if you're raising kids, you have a job, which may or may not be in St. Helena. So, one thing that I would like to see done is our, improve our city website. It's, it's really old and decrepit and not that user-friendly, slightly obsolete. And, you know, I, I personally am no longer getting the city emails. I don't know why, but I'm guessing it's because there's some sort of glitch in the system. And all of that costs money to fix. So, again, if we have revenue, we can fix a lot of problems. I think one of the frustrations that a lot of the public feels is that something comes to the planning commission and they had no idea, and they were taken aback. So, I would like to see, anyone who signs up gets, gets not just city council agendas, but the planning commission agendas. Because sometimes I don't know what's coming up on the planning agenda. I, I go, I go ahead and look, but not everybody does that. So, it needs, the city needs to be more proactive in trying to get citizens involved. But it's tough, you know, it's, it's, it's tough these days. People are busy and stressed out and...
Yeah, that, it's, it's a conundrum in that way. Mary?
Well, I think there's a couple of things we could do. First of all, when you realize you're dealing with a complex issue, like maybe raising the water rates, I think you have to realize that it takes a little more time, maybe, for people to understand the rationale and what the, what the ad hoc committee went through and what the constraints are that we're operating under. And so, you can't just come to the council meeting and say, we had a transparent, you know, meeting, and it's on TV if you want to see it. I think it involves more outreach directly to the community, whether it's, you know, something in the paper, flyers around town, something. I mean, I got my notice today about increasing rates, and probably a lot of other people did, too. And they're, maybe still don't understand the whole issue. So, I, I think you have to be able to stop the train when you realize that people aren't understanding. And maybe you adjust your schedule a little so that everybody understands what's going on. I think you also have to realize primarily who you're impacting. I think the, the bike lane issue is a perfect example. You know, probably the most impacted people on Pope Street were those folks living at Silverado Orchards. And they felt that they were brought into the whole discussion very late in the game and didn't have a real opportunity to participate. So, you have to know, you know, who's, who's the target of what's happening and how to deal with them. Lastly, I have this kind of wacky idea that's on my website that I took from an experience I've had called One Book, One Community, where everybody in town is reading the same book at the same time, and you're talking about it, and you're educating each other about it. And I would have one issue, 12 neighborhoods. And maybe in the month of October, we'll talk about, what are we going to do if Measure D doesn't pass, all around the neighborhoods, in people's homes, and have them bring that information to the city, and then use it as a model for all kinds of issues. If people are willing to keep it up and talk with their neighbors and bring their ideas up to the council or the planning commission when they can. It's okay.
Thank you. As a follow-up to this question about involving the citizens and getting more insight from them, that is sort of a part one of what your job would be, is understanding what the community is asking for. But someone mentioned earlier this evening about conflicting agendas. And so, what, what leadership skills do you bring to this position when you have conflicting agendas on the same subject? At some point, we need leadership skills that will move the needle toward progress, as opposed to nothing happens at all because we can't agree. Can you comment on what your particular leadership skills will be, can be, to move us forward and have more progress than we've seen? Let's start with Jeff, please.
I think I've got the ability to, to, to communicate with people, to listen to people, to find the common good, the common benefit. If there's a conflict that's unsolvable at a, at a council level, if it affects so many people that, that it's a big conflict, that's when we say that everybody- people that, that it's a, a big conflict, that's when we say that everybody in town gets to vote on it. When it's a zoning issue, if it's going to affect everybody in town, that's where the leadership says, "We put this to the citizens who are the heart of the community, they are the investors in the community." But I think it, it starts with conversations. It starts with nights like tonight, where we're all talking and, and looking at each other and feeling what, what each other feels and, and hears each other. And then we see, and if the conflict is so big, we, we've got to put it to a vote, and we've got to be able to direct it to that point if it's, if it, if we can't solve it in a way that everybody agrees.
Thank you, yes, Greg?
Through my, my education and my, my business, I'm, you know, I've turned into sort of a problem solver. But often the problem solving includes what you said, sort of diametrically opposed interests, right? And I think I've learned a lot being both the Planning Commissioner and on the council, in, you know, playing this role and looking at both sides of the equation. I, I love when we were on the Planning Commission and neighbors would come and fight over something, and sometimes we'd say, "You know what? Why don't you take a break and go home and try to figure it out yourselves before we're the court?" And it actually worked once or twice. And so I think I'm pretty good at, at, or very good at seeing both sides of an issue in my profession. I'm a financial advisor, I'll often work with a borrower and a lender and work through complex legal documents where, you know, there are all sorts of points that need to be negotiated and understood, and everyone's looking for the upper hand in those, in those agreements. Ultimately, you have to come to a middle ground, or you're not going to get there and you're not going to consummate your transaction. And so I think that, that experience has given me a skill set where I'm able to, and also during the downturn, I worked on a lot of workouts where property values plummeted, and it was, okay, how are we going to figure this out so everyone can win and, and avoid a situation where everyone loses in, in a, in a panic situation? And so all of this sort of professional background has given me, I think, a pretty, pretty relevant skill set, both the problem solving, the mediation, I'm a good mediator, a good listener, and, and also my, my public service experience as well.
Thank you, Sharon.
Well, I was a lawyer in a past life, and the court, in San Francisco, and the courts are very crowded there, so almost every case got moved into mediation first, and that was really the goal, to try to solve the problems, save the client money, and, and I was involved in that, and I think that I really do a great job of reading people and trying to find common ground, and that's, that's, that's important. I've learned a lot on the council as well, working with other council members who I may, may or may not have agreed with on certain issues, but we seem to find common ground. In my private life, I have twins, and so I deal with conflicting agendas on the same subject daily for the past 20 years. I mean, it's sort of a joke, but on, on some level, it is actually kind of real, because it was people who are strongly embedded in their one way of thinking, and you really have to come up with a creative solution.
Thank you for sharing that. Mary?
Well, somewhat like Greg, my experience as a lawyer, I was a transactional lawyer. And when you're a transactional lawyer, you work to get something done. You know, you want, you need to close a deal, you have a deadline that you have to do it by, and you have to figure out between you and the other side, how are you going to make it happen? It's totally different from fighting in litigation where you're stalling and putting roadblocks in somebody's place. So I, I too think I bring sort of that skill set, which sometimes just boils down to pragmatism, you know? We have to back off of our ideals sometimes and come to a pragmatic solution. I also think people have to have a level of trust in you as a public official, that you're listening to them, you hear them, you understand what their concerns are, and you might vote against their specific wishes in a certain instance, but it doesn't mean you're not going to be there the next time when they have another issue. So it's, it's kind of a segue into your last question, so I'm going to save the rest of my remarks, I think.
Okay. Do we have time for this last question before we go to closing remarks?
We just have to start here.
Okay, all right. So this is a question that has come from the public, and it has to do with, I think, something that Jeff has advocated for. It says, "Jeff advocates for county-wide management when it comes to water development, tourism traffic, and the environment. He also advocates for the county to share their tourism revenue, tourism dollars between towns that have invested in and prosper from new hotels. Do you agree with him? How would you approach the county? And what does St. Helena have to share?" And this will go to Greg.
In a perfect world, we would have a forum where we could look at the health of the valley as a whole. And I've often thought, and I brought this up actually, serving on Lafco, which is this weird little thing, the local agency formation commission of Napa County, where we figure out annexations that make sense or not. We do municipal service reviews and sphere of influence updates. And part of what we look at is, you know, right now, we're doing it for St. Helena, for Calistoga, for Yountville, and then we'll move on to some other cities, and we're saying, "Can this community survive on its own and provide the services it's supposed to provide, a whole host of services, and what's its sphere of influence?" And one of the things that I've been raising in that forum is, maybe, maybe this is the right forum to say, "Well, let's not just look at St. Helena alone, let's also look at Calistoga and Yountville." And we're doing them all at the same time, but yet there's no cross-pollinization between the studies, because it's not set up, you know, to do it that way. And so this would be a shift in terms of how we think and how Lafco operates, but it's something that I've brought up in, in our, our sort of annual strategic planning workshops as something we should be discussing. And eventually, and I agree with Jeff, we need to, we need to look at the health of the valley as a whole and not be incentivizing each of our communities to go out and build, 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 and create more traffic, because that's just going to implode on us. We're all going to look back and say, "What just happened?" But it starts with discussion. So I've had discussions with Supervisor Dylan about, "Look, forget about the fear of people saying, 'Hey, we're going to annex Meadowwood,' but let's sit down and have a two-on-two adult conversation about how we can both find a win-win solution." For instance, we can offer sewer. I think there's some interest in having that. And so maybe we can have that conversation and say, "If they added X number of keys because we gave them sewer, how can we participate in that incremental TOT revenue so that we get some benefit out of it?" So, but again, it needs to start with a conversation, a one-on-one conversation versus, you know, a very hard hill to climb, i.e. annexation, because what ends up happening at the end of it, there's a revenue-sharing agreement that has to be signed, and one party can just hold out, unless we go and lobby in Sacramento to change the laws at the state level. That's going to be tough for our small community to do it from a legal perspective. So I think it's communication. I think we need to, we need to be looking at the, the entirety of, of the health of the valley, and, and that's been done at certain levels, but I'm, I'm a big advocate of that on a forward basis.
Thank you for those specifics, I appreciate it. Sharon, what are your comments about county sharing?
I mean, I think it sounds fantastic in a perfect world, and it really should be a goal. I'm just not sure how realistic it is, it is in the short term. Not, and that doesn't mean it shouldn't be pursued, I'm just saying, short term, a lot of, a lot of people have suggested annexation of Meadowwood, for example, to capture some of that TOT revenue. I'm completely in favor of that, but it's like hitting a brick wall, because the supervisors get to vote on whether that happens. So they're not going to, they're not going to give up the money. But I think that what Greg is talking about is a great plan, which is some sort of conversation, not about annexation, because that's the scary A-word, but maybe we could share some of the revenue, and maybe that would work. Like I said, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a goal. I'm not sure how realistic it is. I think it's a fantastic idea, because we are, the reality is, we are all impacted by each other, and, and it makes perfect sense, but some of the communities in our valley are wealthier than other communities in our valley, and they don't necessarily see it as something that, that should be shared.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, I think we need to start with issues that we can agree on, you know? It's always a good way to get to the touchier subjects. So things like traffic, for instance, you know, relatively neutral issue that affects everybody in the county, and work on that and, and see if there are ways we can make things better for everybody. I think we also need to recognize, though, where we do have some leverage, if we have it, you know, whether it's with water or whatever. Revenue sharing is no doubt going to be very tricky, but in a case like Meadowwood, you know, I'd, I'd be looking at negotiating some agreement where we wean them off the tax revenue and it comes in our direction. You know, maybe it takes several years. I think it's unrealistic to expect the county to just give up that tax revenue and, and hand it to us. So I think you have to be realistic, and I, I tend to agree with Sharon. I think on revenue, our options are, are not going to be as great as they might be in other places.
Thank you. Well, Jeff, this question was somewhat focused on some of the things that you've been advocating for, so we're interested to hear your comments.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, we, impacts don't stop at a city limit line or a county line. And so we have to share, share the burden and share the wealth. St. Helena, we, we should have about 50 or 60 allies in the county that will stand up for us, and those are the people that we provide water for, the businesses that we provide water for, that, that benefit greatly from, from us. And while the county may not want to, want to give up some of their money, the county, by the way, has about $500 million in investments. And there's businesses that are doing very well, and for me to hear that St. Helena's not doing well, and we're providing something that's absolutely essential, I think that we should have these, these, who we provided for are our allies. And though the county may not at first want to give up some of that, it's the right thing to do for them to enter this discussion with us. One of the, one of the problems that we're seeing on the hillsides is tremendous amount of deforestation that we were not expecting to have here. The county is making some decisions, and also the state, that are impacting us, and it's going to affect our health because of what gets into the water. It's going to affect our, actually, probably our water availability if, if, if we see too much activity around our, our watershed and our reservoirs from private entities. In Napa, the county, there's a, a project up there, a couple hundred acres above the Millikan Reservoir. It's estimated it's going to contaminate the reservoir to the point that the citizens of Napa will have to pay $25 million to put a treatment plan in. And so the citizens of Napa have to stand up to the county, and so do we, and we have to say, "Look, it, it's time that we work together, it's the right thing to do, and we have to do it now."
Okay, we've got some interesting answers to that question. Thank you all very much.
Can we add any more?
Um, yes, you may.
So, one of the things...
Let's get in there, wait.
One minute, okay. I do think, you know, short-term, we've got to find our own solutions, but these are long-term discussions we have to have, or we're going to look back and say, "Why didn't we have those discussions?" And everyone's built too many rooms, and it's gridlock, worse than it is already. That said, you know, one of the things that I've noticed, and maybe it's changed, but the way the TID money is allocated, it's based on how much TOT you bring in as a community. And I think, in a way, if we could have a conversation about how to shift that, and I know it's tough, but right now, we're getting the short end of the stick on that. Why? We have the, the lowest level of TOT, and therefore the lowest amount of TID, and we're the one that needs it the most in terms of increasing our occupancy and promoting tourism here in St. Helena, so that we don't have to go out and build four new hotels to, to, you know, create additional TOT, but instead find it from the assets we already have. And so if there's a way to work perhaps with the chamber to have a discussion with respect to how can we change that overall, and with the county and other constituents, how can we change that formula? I'm in support of that.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, on that, we're going to conclude this city council debate in 2016. I want to thank, yes, Mary, yeah, we're not going to...
We're not going to do the closing statement.
We're not going to do closing statements, because the question that the closing statement was focused on has really been answered tonight. Yeah, we, if you want to take a minute and, and, and address it, we, we can absolutely do that. You want me to ask it?
Or their own statement.
Okay. Okay, you guys ready to do a, a one-minute statement about anything that you want to share with the voters?
You know, well, I'll try to address your statement, because you, you asked how we get to collaborative decision-making and stop having so much animosity about things. I think we have to look at our processes, and I think we have to start by recognizing the things that we do agree about, you know, that we were interested in maintaining a vital economy here. We all want to preserve the sense of community. There's a strong sense that, you know, we can't afford for St. Helena to become a second home retreat. And we have to understand that there's limits to our capacity to do things in terms of maybe water and traffic. Second, I think when we're talking to each other, we need good information, we need facts, otherwise we're just talking past each other. Third, you know, I think we have to come to know each other as people, which sometimes means getting out of the environments we're in at the council meetings where we are attacking each other with petitions and really not engaging in productive discussion. So those are my thoughts. I think we, we could do it. We have to change our process.
Thank you very much. Jeff, do you have a closing statement?
Yeah, I think, first of all, thank you, everybody, for coming out and being involved in this. One thing I want to say is that I think that we have to, while we, we want to work together, the idea that we all, there, there's going to be different opinions, there's going to be, there's going to be disparate voices. That's what makes a community great. That's what gives it the fabric, is that it's not a unified opinion. And when you get, when, if, if you get to a place where you're, where, where, where it's being said that it's divisive to have a different opinion, we, we get into trouble, because a community is built on the many different voices coming from the many different places, you know, working towards that, hopefully, a goals that, that work for all of us. But I think that we should be celebrating the, the strangeness of each other, the differences that we have, and, and, and seeing that as the, as the, what makes this community a magic place.
Thank you very much. Greg?
So, look, the past four years have been a really difficult time. There's been a lot of change in our city, and, and we're really at a crossroads, a pivotal point in our evolution as a city, where we need to make some adjustments and some smart changes to ensure our long-term economic stability. We've got to be careful. We, we need to make a lot of careful and balanced decisions, and I'm, I'm prepared to do that, I'm qualified to do it, I've been paying attention for a long time. And it's been an honor for me to serve this community. I hope that I can continue to do that. I'll continue to devote my time and efforts towards preserving this amazing place that we call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon, your closing remarks.
Well, it's been more than four difficult years, it's been eight difficult years, and I've had six different city managers since I've been on the council, so, but we finally in the past two years have a fantastic team in place, and I'm really excited about it, and I'm optimistic, and I think we all want the same for our town, really, at the core. We all want to preserve this beautiful town that we live in, to continue to have a diverse community with opportunities for everyone, and so I think that, but really, we need to get our revenue house in order, and that's the most critical piece, because everything else can flow from there, and I think that I'm qualified to do that. I'm, I have a website now, it's sharonkrulforcitycouncil-story.co, but according to my son, who created it for me, Google will scrape it within 24 hours, so if you just Google Sharon Krul, Krul for City Council, it'll come up, but not for 24 hours. I never knew that was a thing. Also, if you're interested in learning more about my ideas, there's a flyer in the back, Greg and I are hosting some coffee and cocktail evenings, mornings and evenings, and there's dates back there and times, if you're interested.
Cocktail morning.
Well, I didn't say that correctly.
If, if Measure D doesn't pass, we'll need a cocktail morning.
Candidates, thank you so much for sharing your time, your insights, your ideas, yes, absolutely. Okay, this really does conclude tonight's debate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good job.
Absolutely. Likewise.